A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Welcome to another edition of Bearing Arms, Cam and Company. My name is Cam Edwards. I'm glad you're with us on the program today. We are one week away from the start of the special session in Tennessee, called in response to the shootings at the Covenant School in Nashville earlier this year. Governor Bill Lee, originally calling the special session with an eye towards passing a temporary mental health restraining order. That is listed among the possibilities of this session, but there's been a lot of opposition to Governor Lee's proposal, including from the Tennessee Firearms Association. We're going to be talking with John Harris of the TFA here in just a second about what to expect and what he is anticipating during the upcoming special session. Before we get to that, however, Biden's America, it's crushing us. You've got companies laying off tens of thousands of workers, one after the other. Americans working two jobs just to get by. Inflation pushing hardworking families to the brink. Just look at the price of lunch me next time you go to the grocery store. And a digital dollar could be coming down the pipeline to completely destroy our way of life. The truth is, you need a plan. You know it, and I know it. That is why you should call GoldCo, so you can diversify your savings and investments with gold and silver before things get worse. They're a six-time Inc. 5000 winner, 2022 company of the year, with thousands of five-star reviews, and they've helped people like you and me place over $1 billion in gold and silver. They're offering up to $10,000 in free silver while supplies last. And if you call them today, qualified callers will get a free Ronald Reagan half-ounce silver coin. So don't wait. Call GoldCo at 855-412-3806 today. That's 855-412-3806. And now let's get to our conversation with John Harris of the Tennessee Firearms Association. While again, there is a lot of opposition to Governor Bill Lee's version of a red flag law and the parameters of the special session as outlined by Governor Lee would, at least theoretically, preclude a lot of anti-gun bills from being filed and going anywhere. John Harris says that gun owners should not rest easy, at least not until the session is over. Take a look and listen. John, thanks so much for coming on the program today. It's so good talking with you.
Thank you for the invitation.
You bet. Here we are, a couple of weeks out from this special session, which looks like will take place. The governor has made the call official, but interestingly, John, he did not include his, and I want to make sure I get this right, temporary mental health restraining order as part of his package of bills. Now, that would be, I guess, allowed under the scope of the session that the governor set forth, but it looks like his red flag proposal is running into a buzzsaw of opposition there.
Well, you know, if you look at his proclamation, his red flag proposal is, I think, item 12. What he refers to as a temporary mental health order of protection. That is the terminology he used back in April when he tried to circumvent the red flag categorization of his proposal back then. He stuck with that all summer, but clearly, item 12 pretty accurately categorizes or describes what he introduced back in April, which is simply, no matter what he calls it, a red flag law.
Yeah, yeah. So legislation to that end would be allowed under the special session, but it sounds like, John, the support just isn't there right now. In fact, I think it was the lieutenant governor who said, he's not even sure this is going to, actually, we're going to see a bill introduced at this point to those ends.
Well, we've heard that. You know, the lieutenant governor, Randy McNally, he came out in April and said he supported. He personally supports a red flag law. That's documented in the news reports. A couple of other legislators have said the same thing. We have been unable to get the lieutenant governor to do an interview with the Tennessee Firearms Association, but a number of other Republican legislators have done those interviews. And to a one, none of them have been willing to say that they support or would even encourage the governor to go forward with either a red flag law or the special session. So for example, in the Senate, typically, the governor's administrative packages would be introduced by the Senate Republican Caucus Leader, Jack Johnson. He's clearly said in numerous news reports that he's not going to sponsor that bill. I can't say, William Lambeth, the House Republican Caucus Leader, refused the invitation to do an interview with TFA, but my understanding is, he has not affirmatively said publicly that he would carry the governor's bill. He may in fact have said he wouldn't. I'm just not aware of what his public statement has been.
Yeah, and you know, and part of, and I've said it, Bearing Arms, I think the special session, the call for a special session was a mistake on the part of Governor Lee, but I think also how he's handled this has been another political miscalculation. You know, we've heard about all these closed-door meetings, you know, where you've got lawmakers on both sides of the aisle who are meeting to talk about the scope of the bills and what they could do. But all of this sort of kept from the public. You know, in fact, it was just, I mean, I know you said, if we didn't get a list of these bills that we could actually look at and see what was in this language, you know, that this was going to be a sign that lawmakers might try to pull a fast one here. And that has been the case, unfortunately. There has been such a lack of disclosure and a lack of transparency throughout this entire process. Has that stiffened the spine and increased the opposition to the idea of a special session across Tennessee?
I think it has, at least with the people that we're talking with. There's a great deal of concern, because if you look at the prior special sessions, for example, where Governor Lee wanted to give a billion dollars of taxpayer money to Ford so that it could go out as a commercial activity and build electric vehicles. People pretty well knew what the proposal was in advance of the special session. The special session was very, very limited to just that topic. And it was essentially choreographed. Everybody knew walking in that, hey, we've got to introduce it on the floor. It's got to run through a committee real quick. It's got to come back to the floor, and then we're just going to vote it out and go home. And it's all going to happen within three or four days. Here we are, literally, today's the 11th, 10 days out. A week from Monday, the special session is supposed to start. We've seen four bills introduced on the General Assembly's website, but we know that legislators, and one in particular that sponsored one of those bills, have a tendency to open up a bill with what's called a caption bill, put a description in the body of the bill that then, in the first committee hearings, gets totally rewritten with an amendment. So we have no comfort that even what's being shown on the website at this point has any truthfulness to it as the actual intent of the sponsors to be the bill they plan to propose and push through the system. It could just be a caption, a placeholder for some other bill to be sprung on us at the last minute. And the problem is, if you compare the special session, and everybody I've talked with says, they're going to come in on Monday night, I think at four or five o'clock. They're going to probably be home by Thursday, maybe Wednesday, because they're planning on coming in and leaving very quickly. If you contrast that with the fact that he's opened up the special session with as many as 18 different broad categories, like reforming the court system, what does that mean compared to, I want to give a billion dollars to Ford? When you look at the scope of what he's opened up as a proposed agenda for the special session, and legislators are telling me that they're hearing somewhere between 1 and 200 different bills have been sent to legislative drafting to be put into bill format, this is going to be a kangaroo court. It's not going to be what a special session is intended for. And it further implicates that everything that's being thrown out there by the governor really should be brought up in regular session, where bills are filed a couple of weeks before they're heard, amendment processes, people have a chance to look at them, discuss them, pull their legislators aside in the grocery store and say, hey, I do or don't like this. All of those opportunities for public engagement, I think Lee is intentionally, and those bill sponsors that are supporting him are intentionally trying to negate and cut out public input to this process.
Yeah, I mean, listen, as you mentioned, and I live in Virginia. We had a special session on gun safety a couple of years ago when then-Governor Ralph Northam called lawmakers back in the session, and the Republican majority basically gavelled in, gavelled out, went home. But you know, again, we sort of knew that that was going to be the case. We knew that the Republican majority was not going to go along with these gun control proposals. In this case, we've known, Governor Lee talked about calling the special session, as you say, back in April. So there would have been time for these bills to get into the hopper, for people to take a look at these bills at least. But instead, you've got this perfect storm where you've got this rushed session coming, no idea what these bills are going to be. And as I said, I think this has been a huge political miscalculation on the part of Bill Lee here. You know, so obviously, you are not content to just sit back and say, all right, well, we think we're in the driver's seat here. We're not too worried about gun control. Gun owners and Second Amendment supporters in Tennessee, they still need to be very active. It sounds like right up until the time this special session's gavelled out.
Well, and I'm not sure it even ends then. And I, you know, I've sort of viewed what I've seen since April with this governor and the insistence, despite repeatedly being told publicly by legislators that they don't support even a special session, but his insistence that they come into special session to look at now 18 different issues that are extremely broad is nothing short of a political tantrum. He didn't get his way, so he's rolling around on the floor in the grocery store throwing a fit until he, you know, until the legislature responds. Now, I do think they should come in and just adjourn, because this needs to be brought up in specials, in regular session. That's only five months away.
Right.
And at that point, our voices as residents of the state, and actually, I think the voices of people, Second Amendment advocates in other states, because you don't want Tennessee to be a template for how to turn a red state into a red flag state, you know, should be heard and heard loudly across the nation. But that's not what's been transpiring. You're right, they could have had, they have had plenty of time to say, well, we're not going to pass a red flag law, but you know, we're not saying that we won't pass something. So they're talking about, if you look at that proclamation, modifying the stalking laws, modifying the criminal procedures for juvenile arrests and violent crimes, modifying the data that's reported to law enforcement and the government on people who've committed crimes, modifying the data on the people who are victims of crimes that becomes reported to the public entities, changing the mental health code. I mean, these are broad areas, and many of them, expert proof and expert opinion ought to be considered. You're not going to get that in a three- or four-day special session when you don't even know what the bills are.
Absolutely. And even if there are some good ideas contained in there, you know, I, one of the bills that I've heard floated, again, haven't seen the actual text of this legislation, but was a bill to establish new mental health facilities, I believe, one in every congressional district of the state, at least 150 beds. You know, I got to say, John, I personally, you know, I write about the mental health crisis in this country on a regular basis, so I would personally be in favor of that in theory. But again, you've got to look at the particulars, right? You've got to look at the specifics of a legislative bill. And when you've got dozens, if not hundreds, of competing bills that are all being rushed through the committee, there's no time to do the due diligence. So, you know, there may very well be some good ideas contained in the dozens of bills that you've talked about, but I'm not sure that, I don't think it's possible to do a good job of wading through all the devils in the legislative details if we're talking about a three- or four-day special session here.
Yes, and I think that's where the great risk to Tennesseans lies at this point, is that we've got a governor that is going forward with reckless abandon, trying to pass something, pass anything to save face. And I think you've got a lot of legislators who've openly said, I'm not going to support a gun law, but they're telling the governor, we're willing to pass something so that you can come out and say, the special session was a success. We did something in the name of public safety.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're right, and that may very well be the outcome here. You know, regardless of when this happens, special session or a regular session, instead of more gun control laws, we know what the Democrats are proposing, right? Gun bans, red flag laws, you name it. It's the standard, you know, wish list for the prohibitionists out there. Where do you think the state needs to step up? Where do you think the focus needs to be in terms of improving public safety, addressing violent crime, and addressing mental health issues?
Well, all of those are areas that are complicated, and they're complicated not just from a psychiatric perspective, okay, the individual level, but from a sociological perspective, about what are the driving factors in society that have changed in the last 50 years that drive us towards a society where violent crime is so prevalent? And lack of respect for the rights of others, whether it's personal or property rights, has become so widespread. Those are complex issues that passing just a simple law, making something a crime, isn't going to stop. So the first place that we've encouraged legislators that are listening to take a look at what should be done in regular session, and it was going to happen in this year before Covenant happened. If you go back and you look, for example, at some of the statements made by Senator John Stevens in Senate Judiciary, Senator Stevens was one of the few legislators, and he's not the only one, but one of the few, that was talking about the Supreme Court's Bruin decision and how the Bruin decision not only limits their ability to pass new law, but it constitutionally imposes on them a duty to look at the existing laws and see, are we maintaining unconstitutional restrictions that need to be repealed? And so I think that's a big issue that needs to be dealt with, is if you look at Bruin and the new interpretation and test by the court on what's constitutional and what isn't, vis a vis the Second Amendment, much of existing Tennessee case law and much of existing Tennessee statutory law and much of the Tennessee regulatory scheme, like for example, with childcare facilities, is likely unconstitutional under Bruin. So I would think that before they start passing more stuff and piling on, they need to get the broom out and remove all of the stuff from the state's regulatory burden, statutory burden, that infringes under Bruin and the right to begin with. And once we get that paired back to what's constitutionally acceptable, then they can look at what options under Bruin might exist to address some of these other topics. And then there may be solutions to some of these other topics, like funding more mental health facilities that have no issue under the Second Amendment.
Yeah.
So, you know, we wouldn't necessarily take a position on that one way or the other, because we're a Second Amendment-focused group, not a broad-spectrum conservative public policy group.
Right, and I, listen, and I get that, but you know, from a court of public opinion perspective, I think when we say, no, you can't do that because it violates our Second Amendment rights, then the question becomes, okay, well, what can we do or what should we do? And you're right, that we as gun owners, we're not obligated to be public policy experts in, you know, mental health, or addiction, or juvenile crime, or things of that nature. But on the other hand, if we don't have an answer, if we don't say, okay, well, you can't do this because this is hands-off, right? We're talking about a fundamental civil right here that we're going to be infringing on. I think it's helpful for us to at least say, go point in this direction. Go, you know, here are four things that other states have done to address violent crime or address mental illness that don't impact gun owners. And you're right, that it's not our, it's not necessarily our job, it's certainly not our duty. But I think that when we don't have those answers, it gives the other side more ammunition, no pun intended.
Yeah, well, no, and that's a great point. So for example, we do talk about the laws that were passed, although they were one-year windows only, that made firearms, security devices, safes, et cetera, tax-exempt. We do support scholastic shooting programs as a means of trying to teach the youth the safe and responsible use and ownership possession of firearms. We do support eliminating gun-free zones, for example, because we take the position that a firearm left unattended in a vehicle is less optimal in terms of protecting the public than if it's in the possession of someone who ought to be able to lawfully possess it. But then, to your point, you get into, we might say, hey, you need to go look at mental health, but that's an area for professionals, you know, as to what works and what doesn't. So for example, I mean, in my law practice, I know that when you get into the mental health issue and you burden into it the Second Amendment topics, we've got a lot of veterans in this country that are suffering from PTSD that will not go get voluntarily mental health treatment because they don't want it showing up in their psychiatric records that they've got any impairment at all. And so the question might become, how do you facilitate, without a chilling effect, encouraging mental health voluntary access so that people know that whatever they say or do is not going to turn around and infringe their Second Amendment rights?
Yeah, no, actually, that's a really, that's a really good point. And again, all of these things are interconnected, right? If the goal is improving public safety, if the goal is reducing suicides, not just by gun, but saving lives in general, then you not only have to talk about what is legal and what is constitutional, but you also have to talk about what's effective and what these unintended consequences are going to be. And you're right, when you've got this sort of criminalization of mental health, right? Where if you go seek treatment, all of a sudden, you know, you could lose your rights, that I think that does have a chilling effect. And this is one of the things that I know Governor Lee had brought up, talking about, well, you know, if you want more of these civil commitment laws, then that's even worse because we're going to be rounding up the mentally ill, we're going to be stripping them of their gun rights forevermore. You know, one of my problems with the red flag laws beyond the due process concerns is that there is rarely a mental health component at all. A judge says, yep, Cam's dangerous, got to take his guns away, and that's it, right? Once the guns are gone, the dangerous person remains. There's no treatment offered or given or provided to help the underlying mental illness or the dangerousness. Seems to me like maybe, and again, I don't have the answer here, but maybe there's some sort of middle ground where even an involuntary commitment doesn't lead to a lifetime loss of your Second Amendment rights, that if somebody gets treatment and they are restored to competency, the dangerousness is addressed, then maybe their rights are restored as well. But right now, you've got this sort of either-or option, right? Where somebody gets involuntarily committed, their rights are gone forevermore, or we take their guns away, we don't address the underlying problem, and then maybe they get their guns back at some point if we deem them to be no longer dangerous.
I, I. That's a good point. So for example, the federal government passed the 2008 NICS Improvement Act. And what, there's a provision in the NICS Improvement Act, although I don't support the federal government doing much of anything because of the shall-not-be-infringed clause, but there's a provision in it that says, if you have a firearms disability, is what they refer to it as, as a result of an involuntary committal, as a result of an insanity plea, as a result of a mental health issue. The NICS Improvement Act sets forth a procedure, basically, it's three years of being asymptomatic, that you can go in front of a court and say, I'm better. Not Monty Python-style better, you know, but I'm better. And here's medical proof to show it. And the court has discretion to restore your rights, even if you've had a prior committal. Now, Tennessee, for example, and there's not many states that have adopted it, maybe less than half. Tennessee's one that did adopt it. Tennessee adopted it in 2015 or 2016. But for example, the governor's permitless carry law in 2021, despite the fact that we have the relief of disabilities provisions for mental health on our code, ignored that and made it a lifetime ban to carry a gun in public if you've ever had a mental health committal. Now, I think what's going to happen ultimately is Bruin, and some federal courts are looking at this, the Bruin decision is going to strike it down and say, it's unconstitutional to take away Second Amendment rights based on any mental health status, because that didn't happen in 1791. They institutionalized them, and it was an effective disarming, but not a public disarming. But Tennessee, despite Bruin, keeps going down this path, and other states too, of saying, because of public safety concerns, we think this is reasonable. But Justice Thomas in Bruin said, when it adopted the 1791 standard of national historical tradition, that public safety arguments are irrelevant. That shall-not-be-infringed provides no exception for public safety unless that public safety standard existed in a plurality of states in 1791. And so I think it's going to make it tougher on the government. And we've got to keep in mind, as gun advocates, that under Bruin, as you indicated, the burden is on the government to carry the burden of proof to show that the proposed restriction or exemption existed. It's not our job to find it for them, it's not our job to point it out. We've carried the burden of attacking existing laws to try to show that they didn't exist, and the federal courts are agreeing with us. Some state courts are agreeing. There are two New York State opinions where they struck down their red flag law since Bruin. You know, so it's having an impact. And the problem is, you've got people like Governor Lee and some of these Republicans, and matter of fact, some well-meaning conservatives that still latch on to public safety as a justification for clearly violating Second Amendment rights. And that is just flatly unconstitutional at this point.
Absolutely, and you know, and again, I think it goes back to the legal arguments versus the political arguments, right? And for politicians, what the courts say may matter, may not matter. But what the press says, right, and how these arguments are presented, the narratives that are developed, you don't care about kids being murdered. You care more about your AR-15s than you do little schoolchildren. You're taking blood money from the NRA. You know, those arguments, if you've got a squishy conservative, or you have somebody who doesn't, who doesn't believe in what they're saying, yeah, I think those are the folks who crumple. Those are the folks who say, well, maybe we can do something. And I think that's where you get into the danger here, right? Of doing something as opposed to doing something that works and something that's constitutional.
Absolutely, it's a problem. And that's why one of the tools of the Second Amendment advocacy side has got to be the court system.
Yeah, yeah. So, John, again, less than two weeks, well, just a week by the time this interview airs on Monday. What is your advice to gun owners and Second Amendment advocates in Tennessee going forward here over the next few days?
Well, one, I think, I think we pretty well, we've got the, I'll say, we've got the momentum behind us in terms of killing the red flag proposal. But Lee's still trying to, you know, rebrand it and slip it in, but I think we've got the momentum on the red flag proposal. They've got to heighten their awareness and their guard that there may be other things that they're going to try to pass. One, to save face for the governor, and two, to cower to the public safety claims, despite what the Supreme Court has said. But beyond that, the special session's going to last probably a week at most, maybe two. But I'm here in three or four days. Second Amendment advocates in Tennessee and across the country can't breathe a sigh of relief when it's over because all that's going to do, particularly with Bloomberg's, you know, billions of dollars floating out there behind Everytown and Moms Demand Action and a host of other, you know, innocuously-named organizations that claim to be Second Amendment supporters, but then they want reasonable gun control. Is that this stuff's coming back in January, you know, and we've got to be prepared for January as much as we are now for August. And that's not just Tennessee, that's across the country.
Yep.
And I think we have to realize that, for example, with Bruin, as in my position as an attorney, as opposed to my executive director role, Bruin, there have been over 500 cases filed and decided and reported since last June. And those cases are doing things more aggressively and more productively than these legislators have done in decades. And mainly, what the courts are saying is, legislatures, you took an oath to defend and support the Constitution, and you violated that oath the minute you got into office, when it comes to the Second Amendment, in most instances, because if you look at Tennessee and the other states since 1968, most of them have gone down the wrong path when it comes to the Second Amendment.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, John Harris with the Tennessee Firearms Association. Listen, I really appreciate you spending some time with me today, and I'd love to check back in here in a couple of weeks, maybe get an after-action report when the special session concludes. Can we do that?
Absolutely, be glad to.
Right, thank you so much for all your work, John, and your activism. I really appreciate it and look forward to talking to you again very soon.
Excellent, thank you.
Many thanks to John for joining us on the program. And of course, we're going to be following what's going on with that special session once it gets underway, and actually, in the lead-up to the special session as well, at bearingarms.com. Right now, let's turn our attention to today's Armed Citizens story, our Good Deed of the Day, and our Recidivist Report. We'll start there with a story out of Connecticut. Here's the troubling headline, accused killer's fake Amazon pay stubs prompt latest review of Connecticut probation monitoring system. Yeah, that's right. While Governor Ned Lamont and Connecticut Democrats are focused like a laser on responsible lawful gun owners. Uh, they're not paying much mind to criminals there in Connecticut. Uh, an accused Connecticut killer who was on supposed to be house arrest and what's described as strict court monitoring for previous crimes. Ended up falsifying dozens of pay stubs who had looked like he was still working overnight shifts at an Amazon warehouse, according to judicial records. That has led to local, state and federal officials calling for reforms in the monitoring process after an arrest warrant indicated that Chan Williams Bay was allowed to leave home to work for what his probation officer thought was a third shift job at an Amazon distribution center. He was supposed to be at work when police say he fatally shot a man in Hartford, Connecticut last weekend. Hartford detectives learned that Williams Bay had been fired from his job at Amazon last November. Yeah. And he had still been telling his probation officer, oh no, I'm there. And the probation officer, I guess, believed him. I guess the pay stubs were enough, never called his supervisor, said, hey, how's, uh, how's Chan doing at work these days? Nah, just took the parolee's word for it. State judicial branch officials say the agency is now reviewing the incident since they defended under its purview as involved in, quote, serious criminal activity. After examining the pay stubs, the state labor department concluded that Williams Bay provided the probation officer with fake stubs after he'd been fired by Amazon. The judicial branch court support services division, which oversees probation and pretrial release, notified last Thursday that the pay stubs were fake. Officials sent an email that, quote, moving forward, CCSD will review its policies and procedures to determine how best to prevent this situation from occurring, given the ease by which these pay stubs can be fraudulently reproduced. Well, again, seems like there's a real easy answer, isn't it? Contact the employer. Don't just rely on the word of the probationer, uh, that he has a job, that he's going to work, that he's abiding by the terms of his probation. In fact, again, that's such a simple solution, one wonders why that wasn't in place to begin with. As it turns out, according to the, um, this is from the Connecticut Mirror, uh, not the first time the probation officials provided by, uh, CCSD have been reviewed this year. A probation officer never confirmed or visited what turned out to be a fake address for a convicted felon from Stanford, Connecticut, who is now suspected of killing his two-year-old son back in January. Didn't, uh, look into this until the man had been, quote, off the grid for months, according to court documents. Edgar Ismael J. Gomez on probation after serving a 60-day prison sentence for abusing his son. That's right, just 60 days. For abusing his son in 2021, when the child was about six months old. A protective order prohibited Ismael Gómez from having contact with the child, but he was living with a boy and another baby at their mother's home when the homicide occurred. The, uh, mothers to the child's mother, Iris Rivera Santos has since been arrested after police said she lied to them about how the boy's body was found in a plastic bag buried in a park in Stanford, Connecticut. Investigation determined that the probation officer failed to confirm Ismael Gómez's address within the required timeframe. That again, according to the, uh, CCSD. Uh, but after a review of the incident, judicial branch officials determined that no probation policy changes were needed. None at all, even after a little boy ended up dead. And his accused killer supposedly living at an address that did not exist. Yeah. Now again, second high profile embarrassing incident in just a couple of months. And now the department says, whoa, whoa, we're looking into this. We're going to do what we can to make sure that stuff like this doesn't happen again. Do you believe it? Cause I don't believe it. I think they're taking the eyes off the ball. Again, I think they're more concerned about going after legal gun owners than ensuring that violent criminals are abiding by the terms of their probation. And that I blame on Governor Ned Lamont and the Democrats in charge of Connecticut's legislature and the state's bureaucracy. Today's armed citizen story from Huntsville, Alabama. Don't have a lot of information about this, but here's what we do know. A man was shot and injured while burglarizing a home in Huntsville. Uh, an incident that police say was domestic related in nature, that the individual who was shot apparently knew at least one of the occupants inside. Huntsville Police Department says that they got a call of a burglary. Uh, shortly before receiving the call of a gunshot victim, an investigator with the Special Victims Unit determined that 42-year-old Troy Fletcher was burglarizing the home when he was shot. He then fled to a nearby Checkers fast food restaurant. Uh, he is alive, did not succumb to his injuries. He's currently being charged with domestic violence burglary uh, due to his relationship with the victim. The Huntsville Police Department said Fletcher is expected to be okay and will be booked into the Madison County Jail once he's released into the hospital. An investigation is still ongoing, but right now the individual who shot Fletcher not facing any charges. Again, don't have a lot of details about this case. Hopefully be able to bring you more information as it becomes available. Finally, today, in the right place, at the right time, we're unable to do the right thing. Some strangers in Alfred, Maine, who came to the aid of a family whose house was on fire, alerting them to the blaze and allowing them to escape the structure, which suffered significant damage. Uh, fire officials in the small town say it was around 4:30 in the afternoon. They got calls from people driving by on a house fire. Officials say the same people who called 911 alerted the family inside saying, hey, your home's on fire. You need to get out. When crews arrived, the family was out of the home. Flames coming from a large garage spreading into the house. Alfred's deputy fire chief says dozens of respondents or dozens of departments rather responded to the home. And we're able to quickly put out the blaze. They said they had a call in water tankers from nearby towns, even pumped it from a pond down the road. They said the house was, uh, large and and a lack of nearby water. Uh, Jared Clark, Alfred Deputy Fire Chief says, we had a garage that was typically the size of what we consider a normal ranch house to start. Going into a house that's two times the size of a normal house, that requires a fair amount of manpower and of course, water. Nearest hydrant was a neighboring Sanford on this road. We have a pond down the road. So we had to travel that water to the scene. Uh, again, the house significantly damaged the Red Cross helping the family, but thankfully, again, no injuries reported because of those strangers who saw what was going on, stopped their car, not only called 911, but again, alerted the family to the dangers inside their home. So thank you, anonymous stranger, for your very, very good deed. And that is all the time we've got for you on this edition of Bering Arms, Cam and Company. I want to thank you for being a part of the program as always. I'm looking forward to being back with you again tomorrow. It will be a two A Tuesday. Well, of course, every day is sort of a two A Tuesday here on Cam and Company. But we're going to keep you up to date on all of the latest second amendment news and information on this, uh, two A Monday as well. Just go to bearingarms.com and you can find out all the latest info from all across the nation. If you like what you see, it also encourages you to become a VIP or VIP gold member. All you have to do, go to bearingarms.com slash subscribe. Use the promo code gunrights and you can get a significant savings on your VIP or VIP gold membership. And as our way of saying thanks for showing your support, we're going to give you exclusive analysis and stories that you won't find anywhere else because your support does make a difference and it truly does matter. So thank you again. All right. Enjoy the best of your Monday as well as you can. Looking forward to being back with you again tomorrow. Until then be well, be safe and be free.